Would you like to call this meeting to a word? Quick note for everyone here, if you are interested in making citizens' comments, we do have a sign up sheet. There's an opportunity to be toward the front of the meeting and then want to back into. Dr. Siller, I'm just meeting with proper notice. It's your head. That's excellent. I'd like to ask everyone to rise, face the flag so we can see.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we get a volunteer to read our mission statement?
Sure. The law for various school districts in partnership with communities is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be reproductive, responsible, self fulfilled members of society.
Thanks, Tom. Item two, our agenda minutes approval, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as stated or any revisions proposed?
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, motion passes. We get a motion to approve the meeting minutes approval rating. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three, addressing the board, we have some special guests here tonight.
Yes, we do. I'm so excited. This is one of my favorite times of year and of course, since we only have one board meeting in the month of December, the fact that we get to kick it off in such grand style with all of you and all that you've been doing to prepare for the holiday concert. When is the holiday concert, by the way?
December 17.
Oh my goodness, okay. So, we get the first preview. How lucky are we? And Mrs. Thuley and Mr. Icing, there he's back there with the blue Santa hat on.
Oh yeah.
I love it. You've all prepared a couple of selections you've been working hard on. Would you be willing to lay a few on us?
We will.
Alright.
One, two, three. That's beautiful. That's beautiful. Wow. That's beautiful. 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 That's beautiful.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the board and our all assembled here tonight, you really put us in the holidays spirit. Thank you for all that you've done. Would it be okay if we could take a moment, just do a quick whipper around the room? I'd love to know who you are and tell us what grade you're in and anything else you think you'd like to share about your musical experience. Who wants to start? We'll kind of go in order from there. How about you? You always get such a friendly smile on your face. Tell us, who are you?
I'm Maddie.
Nice to...
I'm in eighth grade.
Eighth grade?
I'm Ellie and I'm also in eighth grade.
I'm Zoe and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Julian and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Peyton and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Haley and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Morgan and I'm in eighth grade.
Thank you.
I'm Haley and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Molly and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Liam and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Caleb and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Miss Julian and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Helen and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Hazel and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Abby and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Melissa and I'm in eighth grade.
Mr. Icing, also in eighth grade.
I'm Alex and I'm in eighth grade.
Boyk, eighth grade.
Bronte, eighth grade.
Let's give another round of applause. How do you plan on continuing in the band program or music program next year? Love it, love it. Our program, as you well know, is state renowned, dare I say even Midwest renowned. And that's due in very large measure, not only to your talent, but the talent that's brought out by your fantastic teachers. Can we give them some love too tonight? Now, the geeky side of me will tell you, I continue to study how students who perform in music and arts and other areas continue to excel well beyond into high school, college, and beyond. So, to the extent to which if you continue to find passion and love and joy in the good work that you've demonstrated here tonight, it will take you very far in life. So, we're just so grateful for the time and commitment you put into practicing your instruments, but then also to share that spirit with us tonight. In honor of that, I spoke to my friend, Mr. Miller, and a couple of his sons, and I have some treats here for you this evening. Won't you come on down and grab some here before you leave? Just a small way of saying thank you. We wish you all the very best on December 17th.
Thank you.
Onward, upward. Come down and grab some, please. Are you in bed? Good luck today. Good luck today. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
On top of the academics, on top of the extracurriculars, on top of just being a middle school kid, and to be a few months into the school year and just have this place feel really good because of 520 middle school kids is a pretty fantastic way to start the year. So, anyway, sort of a gentle statement, but a super important one. So, they really made us proud, for sure.
Well, due in large measure to your faculty and your staff, and of course, the leadership shown by you, and this is going to end each and every day, this doesn't just happen by luck, it happens because of purposeful planning, and you all and your staff should be committed as well. Thank you so much. Thanks for meeting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, because middle school is also the easiest time.
Thank you both. I see we did no one else log in for citizens comments here, Dr. Siller, no, which brings us to school news.
Yes, I know how we're doing.
I'm dying, I think it's December now, so it makes me happy. As Mr. Criss just then mentioned, I mean, winter sports are getting into here. I know a lot of people, always in the music community, have been looking forward to the holiday concerts. I know that the orchestra has a concert this week on Thursday, the six through 12 concert. And I guess December now, the FAFSA is available, so I'm sure a bunch of seniors are scrambling to get that finished, but other than that, I don't think there's any.
We had a wonderful Thanksgiving. We're glad you're back for the next good few days. We have a couple of additional items to share with the board. First, I'll be sending around some thank you cards to you and ask if you'd be so kind as to sign on to them in addition to the great work of our music teachers this evening. There's a number of other cards. I'd ask if you could please sign your name on here, just a small thing, saying thank you for many people's good works. And here's a great story that just embodies, I think, the holiday spirit. You might remember the story of Glenn and Mary Speig. Remember that $100,000 donation that we received, the board accepted, actually, at the last meeting? Well, we come to find out this afternoon that that donation was actually made on behalf of one of their former students. Oh, how beautiful is that? The imprint that we have on kids, sometimes we don't know it for years and years to come. And so when I heard that, I thought you'd want to know that as well. So not only do we want to thank the Speig family for all they've done, but then also a gentleman by the name of Richard Brualby. Mr. Brualby was kind enough to create this scholarship for future and aspiring collegiate students, and so we're excited about getting that off the ground here come this, this spring. I thought you might find interest and light of what we're doing with the International Baccalaureate Program with the Health Science Academy, if you will. That we're actually having the UW School of Pharmacy. They're coming in to visit our students, our HOSA students, that's our Health Occupation Science Academy. That's happening on the 5th, so that must be Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And as Director Straka mentions you during your recent report, we've just seen a huge increase in the number of students who've expressed interest in the health sciences field. And to have the UW Pharmacy School come in and present, I think speaks to the excitement level of our young people in this area. And then, word has it, PTO's having a craft night over at the IC. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes. Monday, the 9th, 5 o'clock, I think, is when we're starting. You come in, you make your crafts, then when you leave, you pay for whatever you've made. And we are desperate need of volunteers because the art students have an art show the next night, so they are usually our large pool of volunteers. So if you have a kid looking for Silver Court, National Honors, volunteer just because, we'll take middle schoolers, because we need a lot of volunteers. You can imagine when there's glue and glare and crafts, you need a lot of adult supervision or, you know, quasi-adult, bigger kid supervision. So if anybody's bored, it's a good time. Yeah, it's four hours usually, 5 to 9 is usually, but I think we're only going till 8 now. I think we shortened it up, because nine hours is a very, very long time, because we usually start setting up around like 2:00. We have to cover every surface with paper because there's, did I mention there's glitter? No, no, we try not to use hot glue glitter. We learn from our mistakes. So, yes, it's a good time, so.
Any other school news?
I have a couple of things, a couple of updates. On the 19th, Jessica and I attended a VOSI advocacy workshop. It was quite lengthy and had a lot of good suggestions, a lot of which we already do. I can pass the presentation on to Dr. Siller, and I'm really distributed and I'm interested in looking through it. But they talked, they had some good ideas for faculty advocacy, including things like developing a formal plan, designating someone from your board office to speak so that you can quickly, if things come up, routinely discuss legislative issues and meetings, which I think we do, making sure you vary your office communication, and ensuring frequency of proactive communication, not just like waiting for the advocacy day, but doing things like inviting your legislators to meetings or events or sending you your newsletters. And also talked a bit about developing community partnerships to help strengthen your advocacy. So it was a good, it was a, it was a good, a good holistic overview of do's and don'ts and suggestions with some upcoming information on the upcoming session, budget stuff, which we talked about.
Excited because our community legislative engagement team will reengage on January 27th for our first meeting of the year. Talk about that.
The other thing I mentioned, the 21st, the Safety Task Force meeting at the high school, good showing from the community, good engagement, and the next meeting of that is this Thursday, the 5th, at the middle school. And then also on the 5th is the next meeting, the Dade County, the Greater Dade County School Board Consortium, for August 6th to 7th. That one's going to be virtual, so if anyone's interested.
Mr. Vice President, I realize that I made a mistake, and that I didn't reference one other item that board members may have seen before them tonight. This is the new campaign finance form, and I'd ask if you'd please be so kind as to fill that out before you leave here tonight. It's due by the end of December, but I want to make certain that I don't lose track of it since we won't be meeting again formally here tonight. Of course, if I could be of any help in completing this, I'd be happy to do that.
One more school. Fryball starts tonight for those in high school, which is open gym, but it's a game that was invented by a former teacher. It's like soccer-ish, and it's very competitive and very fun. So if you have a high schooler that needs something to do to get some energy out, it's 8 o'clock to 9:30, I think, every Monday in the winter. Yeah.
Which gym?
It's one of the high school gyms. I don't know which, I didn't know.
I think it's in Oxford.
I think so. Yep, it's called Fryball. And it's very intense. Orion's come home with some very nice rug burns from the ground, so it's a good time. So if you have a high schooler that needs something today.
I have, I have one thing, just on a, on a Saturday note. I know a lot of, probably new business school, I was just cool, passed away, was laid rest last week. And she was a pillar to a lot of the program here, in the gymnastics program specifically. But she was a teacher of mine. I can remember when she dominated all of us. Is this, say it in my heart, but I was about to go.
Thanks for mentioning that time. Any other school news? All right, move on to item number four, personnel transactions. Dr. Siller, I'll let you elaborate on this, but because this is our only meeting, or the meeting of the month, I know that you wanted to make a special disclaimer about this as well. Yes, thank you so much, board members. To that end, as we have any opening, particularly certified openings, we'd love to be able to give permission to go ahead and advertise, and so fortunate to hire, notify the board so that we can be ready to go in time for the students' return after winter break on January 6th. The board will keep you apprised of whomever we may be doing final work with.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We missed our chance to recognize Katie for her good work on summer school here. Yes. You have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, our consent agenda. Call for, I'm so sorry, get back to you, Mrs. Convention. The annual safety drills, which are required under statute, are included for your year, board members. Oh, great, thanks for mentioning that. Call for a motion to approve or applaud any individual items for discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Annalee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six are discussion items. Meeting reports, first up is PGT.
Yeah, we had a short meeting, covered some good topics. They're fully staffed right now. The outdoor facilities are kind of getting laid to rest for winter. The water lines are getting taken care of, and worn out by an outside company that kind of protects our liability. Something happens with them, they can be replaced. The snow removal equipment is getting ready, even though everyone's probably upset about that. Transportation update, they had two trainees with their learner permits, so that's good. They're going to be going through a new training process for getting their licenses. So once they're through that, we'll have a better idea how that's going to go. The fuel blend should be getting switched over, so hopefully we don't have any issues on roadways. Once it's, well, it already is cold, but yeah. And then, electric bus is on order, and they are working with DNS and Electric Company to start thinking about putting in the charger. We will be meeting in-house on the 17th to discuss some of the bits. So, that covers our meeting.
Any questions for Tom? All right, next up, finance, Joel Creighton.
We had a very short meeting, more of that. Ryan, the rule was on our last meeting to discuss everything referendum related. I won't steal much of Scott's thunder here later tonight. We're talking about the specific steps in order to secure the funding needed for capital project coming up. We'll have a couple of motions tonight to discuss on that. He did talk a fair amount about inverted yield curves and the fact that we have some very unique financial opportunities and circumstances in front of us, part of which we will discuss this evening further. In addition, the donations, which have already been talked about a few different times, but again, the state scholarship, which is absolutely incredible, as well as Mr. Steve Hellway donating the $7500 new lift so that our students don't have to hold the car above their head anymore. So, all things that we took care of at the finance committee. So, our next meeting date will be next week on the 9th, virtually.
Hey, thanks, Joel. Any questions? All right, currently, safety.
Yep, we met on the 18th, and we spent most, much of our time with a building bridges update. We had a couple guests from Building Bridges, Amanda Smith and Kim Rockauer, who gave us an overview of the work that Building Bridges does and how it's going. And, excuse me, the Building Bridges will, will work with the staff and identify students who need different social supports and work with them for over the 90 days for each semester to set goals for home, community, school, and help get them ready for therapy and the work from there, provides those long-term services. And they also do some, they can provide professional development, presentations to staff and families. So it's good to, good to hear from them, good to hear an update. They talked a little bit about satisfaction surveys that they've done on the families that they've worked with, and that everybody who has been through the program, very high satisfaction ratings on those surveys from the services that they provide. So, really good to hear from them. We reviewed a, the existing intergovernmental agreement that we have with the police department, and just made a small wording change at the end that would allow easier access, allow the police department to have easier access to directory level data. We reviewed collusion and restraint metrics, and the takeaway from that is the metrics are overall stable from last year to the year before, and nowhere near where they were pre-pandemic because of all the ongoing training that staff has had in de-escalation tactics, and not violent practices, I imagine. And we had a brief school safety update. Paul talked about the drills. The middle school had, was practicing barricading that week. The high school had practiced a hold that week. And one of the things that I appreciated, that I learned through that update that I didn't realize before is that like, with having, everybody having screens in the classroom, that the principals are actually able to be on screen through those drills and help, like, actually provide a presence in the classroom, which I think is really, is really good and helpful. So, our next meeting is the 16th.
All right, thanks. Currently, questions from anyone? Great. And my update will be really short because we did not have a meeting in November. They'll advance the village park recreation forestry, December meeting to the 10th. So I have an update for you in early January on that. Item number seven, action items. We've got five elements on the docket for tonight. Dr. Siller, no question for you. First readings, can we only vote for if all seven members are present? Do you remember? Yes, that's correct. Does that influence the order at all that we tackle these? Do we have the latitude to move those around until this ceremony arrives? I think that's, that's a brilliant idea. In the event that items D and E should falter, I'd ask that maybe they're giving consideration to vote once she gets here. But let's, let's, let's do as you propose. I think it's great. Okay, good. Good. I guess that would bring us to, we start with seven D then? Yes, please, do you have, would you like to walk us through that? D is resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a $10 million bond anticipation note?
Thank you. Thanks again, those of you that either had a chance to attend our finance committee meeting on November 11th, or you had a chance to briefly glance over the minutes. I'll repeat a little bit of what's already in there. As you know, we had a successful referendum last month, and so much has happened in meetings and conversation just since that time. It's hard to believe that it hasn't even been quite a month yet. But it's exciting opportunities for us. And so, one of the things that was our goal, post a successful referendum at our finance meeting on November 11th, is to have Brian Verb from Bear Public Finance join us and start talking about what a financing plan could look like. A number of the things that we talked about are things that we've done in the past, most recently back in 2017, when we had a successful referendum, about coming up with a financing plan and having multiple borrows rather than borrowing off their formerly right away. So that's the purpose of why there's two resolutions to consider. To Joel's point earlier on the finance minutes, we do have a unique opportunity right now in the environment where the short-term investment earnings that we can receive will be higher than the long-term cost of the funds to do the project. And what that means essentially is, when we, as a district, borrow the funds, we can invest in products such as CDs, short-term treasuries, where the investment interest earnings will be higher than the long-term cost of the, of the project, like I mentioned. And on top of that, this first resolution, letter D, the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a $10 million bond, essentially gives us the opportunity to borrow $10 million before the end of the 2024 calendar year. And you might say, well, gosh, wait a minute, we would borrow $10 million now, but we still haven't heard an architect. We still have design work to do. We still have contractor to employ. Why in the world would we borrow $10 million? Well, one reason is exactly that, that we can maximize our interest earnings. The other piece to it is because we're looking to borrow under $15 million, in this case $10 million. Under $15 million, it gives us the opportunity to be able to keep all that earnings and not have to give it back after three years because of our charge loss. So that's fantastic. I think Tom and I had a brief conversation a few weeks ago. Well, gee, if it's under $15 million, why are we looking at borrowing $10 before the end of the calendar? It's a really good question. The reason is because if we borrow $10 million or under, in this case, this resolution would do $10 million, we'd be considered a small issuer. And Brian shared with us that the tax breaks that are given to banks when they take advantage of working with us on this $10 million might lead us down a road to get, you know, advantageous investment returns back. So borrowing $10 million now allows us to hit before the end of the calendar year 2024 that part. Once January 1, 2025 rolls around, we would then look in within the next couple of months to look at some additional borrowing for calendar year 2025. Again, all taking advantage of the great environment that we have right now, maximizing our interest rates. So, I'll pause right there for just a second to see if there's any questions on that. I think I will just address a little bit of letter E, just because they do go hand-in-hand in our financing plan. But I'll pause on the $10 million version just here if there's any other questions. While you're thinking, if this is approved, we would close on the funds on December 19th, Thursday, December 19th. We would actually take those assets. And then, between now and then, next Monday, our finance meeting, December 9th, our bond proceeds manager will be present to do a short presentation. They're the folks that we worked with back in the 2017 referendum. You might say, well, what does a bond proceeds manager do? They're the ones that help us look for positive interest earning opportunities with CD products. So we always provide opportunities for our local banks and here in Dade County to work with us, locking in on CDs. But they also have a network of banks that they've already pre-strained ahead of time, and they will give us more information on what those opportunities are. We're not looking to put anything in the CDs on December 19th or December 20th, but that is the sort of long-term, over the next few months, we'd be looking at doing that. So Josh Barrie from PMA will be joining us next Monday at the finite finance and talk about bond proceeds management. I'll pause for a second. Any questions on the $10 million? Also, I'll just touch base briefly a little more on letter E, just because, like I said, it's part of our overall financing plan. Even though they are very separate resolutions, we would need separate resolutions. So, letter E is sort of step, what I would call step two of our financing plan. Letter E says that the resolution authorizing the issuance in proportion, establishing parameters of the sale not to exceed 25 million. So one of the things that Brian talked about is because some folks live in the finance world every single day, when we get to the turn of the calendar year, between January, February, and March, he would be looking each and every day to determine what would be the best day that we want to lock in on a long-term bond. And in order to do that, sort of calling all of you and saying, hey, can we meet in 20 minutes to have a board meeting? And we didn't even post it 24 hours in advance. Letter E provides authorization for what we call parameter resolution, parameters that would allow us, being Dr. Siller, myself, our board president, Jessica, and we, our court clerk, to come together when Brian gives us that phone call to say, hey, you know what? I think this week, we really need to, we really need to lock in. And it's not to exceed $25 million. That's really important because we would not only pay back the $10 million, we would lock in an additional $15 million per calendar year 2025 for a total not to exceed $25 million. It's important to know, remember, the referendum was for $34 million. So the reason why we're looking at 25 is to meet that $15 million threshold per calendar year 25. And because we haven't received bid yet from contractors, we don't know what the official scope will end up looking like, it doesn't make sense or isn't appropriate to borrow the entire 34. We wouldn't be able to maximize our interest earnings now. And who's to say, you know, in 2017, we didn't borrow 5.5 million at the end of the project because of how favorable the bids were? We're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll have a great experience again. But that remaining $9 million, if we needed to borrow some or all of it, we'd be looking at doing something in calendar year 2026, really when the project is really going. So Brian, I think, like he did back in 2017, really set us up for success. And I appreciate all of you, immediately after our board approval, our board approval, the referendum approval, for the board to be able to have conversations with us and finance really fast, and have our first board meeting in December, and only board meeting, to consider doing a financing round at the gates. And we received a couple of compliments from folks already just for the proactive approach that you've taken on, the tackling of these investment opportunities that we have. Questions? I hope I was able to express my thoughts clearly.
And we can't make this estimation until the facts and figures are in, but do we have any, is there a range or some indication of how much money, how much better off we are by taking this approach than if we would have gone full in or anything like that?
Yeah. Well, the good thing is, we know that with our, we won't know until we lock in on the rate skip and what we can get in investment earnings. The one thing that we are noticing, though, is Brian's updated projections on the referendum shows that we're going to be under what our initial tax impact was, which is fantastic. And I think we said, we even had good conversation. If property values, equalized property values remain even have a 2% increase over a long period of time, we're still looking in the, in the upper, you know, 50s, low 60s cents per thousand dollars of equalized value, which is fantastic and certainly below what our projection was.
Motion to approve resolution authorizing issuance and sale of a $10 million bond anticipation note pursuant to section 67.121B of the Wisconsin statute.
I'll second that. I'll second.
Leah and Sarah. Are we in motion on the table? All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, and I apologize. This has to be a roll call vote, doesn't it? It doesn't have to be, but I think we talked about. Let's, let's do it as well, if we could. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yeah. Tom?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. What do I have on, on the, item E would be up for discussion at this point. Call for motion for a resolution authorizing the issuance in proportion and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 25 million. General obligation, promissory notes.
Thanks for reading it for me.
I'll take one. Leah and Jessica. Any further discussion? Great, another roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica? Sarah?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, for myself. Charlie?
Yes.
Yes for myself.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. We appreciate your support. Thank you for the participation. We had a robust conversation at the finance committee. I need to excuse for just a moment, I need to get some paperwork from Scott and from Aubrey.
Yes.
So give me 30 seconds, we'll go right to the, if it's okay with you, Mr. Vice President, can they, first reading of the policy?
Yep, absolutely. Jessica, we flipped the order.
I was just gonna, well, my first one.
We didn't cruise straight through.
Yeah. It was like by 17, you were already at E?
Yeah.
The way you said, hold me back.
Like we didn't have a full board.
As much as Brian likes to practice, we figured we'd just get that.
No, I think Brian's over this policy.
The policy you live and breathe in there, right? One of the swing, right? That's what I took out of that.
Yes.
I'd rather, I'd rather you be here. No, are you jealous that you can't spend $35 million tonight?
I'll get there one day.
Yeah, you have to fill out your adders and stuff, including your treasury information only, then your, does that have to be used by us? Then, or you, maybe co-opted us in 2025, I don't know.
It should just be a blank. I have no money. It should be the check out, so the timeline just be.
Put your name, address, and give out like that.
Okay, we got time. We'll talk slowly.
Okay, thanks.
You've seen this policy a few times.
A couple times.
Perfect.
Do you just make up major committees?
Yeah.
Joel's committee has one.
I have to put it in there, so. Committee will think once.
We're supposed to keep that going. So I'll just sit over here. Pull this up. All right, so this policy was remodeled after lawyers kind of made some suggestions to really go into a little bit more depth on kind of the complexities of the laws around special education and be more explicit in some areas and kind of also trying to state the federal and state laws are very different around special education. And sometimes they're complementary and they're kind of independent of each other. And so trying to kind of word that, and we've kind of tried to word it in our safety wellness committee in a way that makes the most sense as well, that we follow the federal law. But then we also follow all of the state laws that come about in special education as well. What kind of one of the key changes too is making it in-person first language. So instead of special education students, it's programs for students with disabilities. We also serve, as you know, students with disabilities ages three through 21, but that is until graduation requirements. And so sometimes students stay through 21, most students exit after their four years in high school. Sometimes they stay one more year, but kind of how the law states is that when you, if you walk off the school property with the graduation diploma, then graduation ensues and then we. So those are some of the areas. And then just kind of screening, referring, and identifying. And then the director of student services, kind of going really, the LEA is kind of one of the most important pieces of kind of legally defining who's in it because of the LEA in the IMP meeting is the, the individual who gets to make the decision for monetary or programmatic issues. And so it's important that it specifically states who has the authority to be the LEA in a meeting, because you don't, you don't want that to be anyone or maybe to be able to free-range that. And so that is specifically calling that out as well. Those are the recommended changes.
The only thing I see from our discussions is we had talked about like writing out what IDA is in the policy. That was my only comment.
Got it. Yep.
I think we went back and forth on it a few times, but otherwise the sentence doesn't quite make sense, so I think we like spell it out, it'll be fine.
Other than that, I already went through it.
For Brian.
It's Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, I'll give you a line, so get on that. One small spelling thing, it's complementary with E. Line forward toward the end on the right side. Is this too small for me? Bottom right corner, zoom. There you go. That is, C O M P. Yep. Cool. Any other comments, suggestions, discussion? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sarah, second by Leah. All in favor?
First reading, actually.
First reading, roll call, thank you.
I was like, wait a minute, that was, that didn't feel right.
Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Great, next up, the first reading, I have the conservative additions in policy 533, employment recruitment, employee recruitment and hiring.
Yeah, I have two policies and they kind of go in here, so I'm going to explain both of them. We recently reviewed these in the personnel committee. Policy 533 is really the all-encompassing policy. It talks about hiring, recruitment, and termination. And we've adjusted the title. Policy 546 was a small policy for classified staff only. So when we're looking at 533, there's a large section that's for all employees about hiring procedures, and then there's some information that pertained just to professional or certified staff. And then finally, we brought in that section for classified staff into this policy as well. So there wasn't large changes in the policy. You can see some additions in the professional and certified staff area is that has some legal references to contractual cases from the state of Wisconsin. So that they added just for clarification. And hopefully the policy then now distinguishes what's applicable to all employees and then the differentiation between the certified and professional versus classified staff.
Motion to approve.
Another discussion from this group? I did have one comment down there, I'm going to try to find it. It was about reasonable expectations. Said with and with or without reasonable expectations or accommodations.
What that means?
I think there was this situation where I was like, there can't be with and without. Sorry, I didn't make my specific invitation in this one.
So with accommodations would mean that we're providing some kind of support structure to allow that person to work in their role. Without an accommodation, meaning that they maybe not met the essential functions of the job, that at which time, can we need to talk about whether or not they can complete the essential functions of the job?
Okay.
Yeah, it does seem kind of, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it was like, I could have seen it as one or the other. Okay. Great, I'll give you the motion on the table. This would be a roll call, all in the other discussion though. All right, Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
That also a yes.
And then I think the next one is just because we moved that information into 533, we no longer need the 546.
Motion to remove 546.
Leah and Tom. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, well, thanks, Erin. That concludes the end of this under action items tonight. Citizen comments, we had no sign-ups for that one, correct? Great. You can see the long list of future agenda items there, schedule of the next meetings. And at this point, I'd like to put up for discussion the possibility of the executive session, contemplated closed session. Per section 19.85, one CE, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee or which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit superintendent's evaluation. And is this a roll call? It is. Unrolled, roll calls. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself is a yes.